Well, it looks like we're up. I call to order the May 23, 2017 special business meeting and ask the administrator to take the role, please.
Well, good morning, commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Nate Boderman, representing county counsel, and then to my left Caroline Hill, serving as your clerk of the board this morning. So the role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. And Commissioner Fisher is currently on jury duty, so we hope we'll see her a little later today. So I think we should do a pledge of allegiance that's not on here, so please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, first up is an approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Metro, the city of Lake Oswego, and the city of Tualatin, and the city of Westland related to the designation of urban reserves in the Stafford area. Nate?
Good morning, commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel. Very pleased to be with you this morning to present to you an intergovernmental agreement for your approval. This IGA relates to the urban and rural reserves in the metro area and more specifically future development in the Stafford area. As you're aware, the concept behind this agreement really was a response to concerns raised primarily by the cities of Westland, Tualatin, and a number of residents in the Stafford area regarding the capability to provide infrastructure to the Stafford area, which of course resulted in the original reserves designation being remanded back to Metro and the counties from the Court of Appeals. This IGA has been drafted as a five-party IGA, which would include the county, metro, and the cities of Westland, Tualatin, and Lake Oswego. And I understand that as of last Thursday, all of the affected cities have authorized a representative to sign this intergovernmental agreement. Metro has indicated that they intend to sign but have not yet scheduled a meeting. My understanding is that that would be handled at the same time that they do a final approval of any findings which were adopted and transmitted over to Metro. So probably June sometime before Metro would get a chance to sign this particular IGA. So the version of the IGA before you this morning is substantially similar to the one that you saw at your last public hearing earlier this month, and it would be staff's recommendation at this time that you adopt the version of the IGA which is presented to you today.
Does any member of the commission have any clarifying questions? Line 16, item 3A. I'm just kidding.
On page 97.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak. I do have a list. Jeff Goodman and Jeff Condit are up first. Thank you for coming today. Go ahead.
Thank you for having us. I just want to say that on behalf of my clients, we're deeply appreciative that we're at this point, and we thank the commissioners for your efforts in this and your patience with us. And I personally want to thank your county administrator, Don Krupp, and Martha Bennett of Metro for sort of kicking off this idea and getting us thinking that maybe we could move forward in this direction. And I would like to thank your staff, Nate Boderman and Stephen Madcor, for working through all the nits that we had to pick in order to get to this point. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and commissioners. My name is Jeff Goodman. I'm a member of the Lake Oswego City Council. My colleagues on the council know that I'm here and know that I'm here to speak in support of this intergovernmental agreement. I want you to take just a moment to think about what has been accomplished. I think one year ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, or perhaps even 15 years ago, this agreement would not have been possible. And I believe that one year, five years, or 10 years from now, this agreement would not be possible. Yet here we are today, agreement in hand. Reaching this agreement has been hard fought and long sought. The negotiators, the administrators are to be commended, as well as the elected officials. Everybody persevered. Everyone got something they wanted. No one got everything they wanted. Collectively, we have achieved a substantial first step. Tualatin City Council, unanimous. Lake Oswego City Council, unanimous. Westland City Council, unanimous. Metro will be unanimous. And last, but not least, Clackamas County Commission will be unanimous. Thirty-one elected officials representing the entire spectrum of views with respect to Stafford, and I think everything else, unanimous. We cannot guarantee success in the future of Stafford, but we can do something better. We can continue to earn it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your soon-to-be unanimous vote.
Thank you. Molly Ellis and Jay Minor.
I'm going to be speaking on the findings. Is that different than this?
I'm just speaking for myself.
Yeah, that's the next one. Okay. So let's do Judy Large. Judy?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi. Hello again, all of you. I want to thank you all for your tireless effort through this long period of indecision and your service in this very difficult capacity. I've lived in Clackamas County all my life, raised six kids here, taught school here, lived in the hamlet for about 50 years now. Like all of you, I have thought long and hard about the highest and best use for the Stafford Basin. My 10 years on the board there, and especially the two years of working with 10 neighborhood captains to conduct a very thorough and inclusive survey, have left me with one conclusion: This unique piece of land does not fall comfortably into any capacity, though you've chosen what I believe to be the best disposition for it. Metro has the means and the impetus through Goal V to protect what is important to all of us, as well as later generations. Please consider, including emphatically in your IGA, the long-term goal of protecting the wildlife corridor that runs through the heart of the EFU areas between the Willamette and Tualatin rivers. Here are the seven streams. The prime farm and forest land that has laid fallow during these years of indecision have fostered an extraordinary wildlife habitat. Here, we as a community have documented sightings of over 100 birds protected by the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act, 20 critical, sensitive, or endangered species, such as western meadowlarks, bluebirds, painted turtles, summer steelhead, and beavers, just what Metro is seeking now to reestablish in their natural park areas. We have an opportunity now, if not an obligation, to establish a natural, wild parkland area of significant size extending through the heavily wooded area north to south through the central heart of the hamlet. This area is hilly, difficult to serve, embraces the convergence of streams. It could become that open, breathing space that Westland, Tualatin, and Lake Oswego, and the community living here have longed to preserve lest the cities mass together in the future. And with the only footpaths, bike paths, and kayak trails joining community to city, this kind of park could offer an environmental, educational opportunity in balance to the agricultural education offered at Lusher. But it will require the study of a working biologist and more than Metro's present 50-foot stream setback to protect it. Please ask for true accord from Metro that the corridor will be identified and appropriately studied so that what is deemed precious to all our surrounding communities may be preserved. Our community voted to preserve our resources by working to establish a central natural park and open space for study, recreation, and inspiration between the encroaching cities. By requesting in your IGA that Metro identify and protect this ephemeral corridor, you can help us now to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy?
Wow, well said. I'd like to just tag on to that. This is such a unique, splendid area, and we have an abundance of wildlife there that you don't find in other places. And it's true that areas in Portland are trying to recover some of these same species. I just want us to very thoughtfully take time to think about protecting that area and to not rush into this or do a quick, quick study, because once something like that is gone, it's gone forever. And I think now as we get into the technical world, we just need more and more green space and nature. And we also have farms there that can provide food. We're supposed to buy local. We have great farms you can walk up to and pick your own corn or squash or whatever. And the other thing is, over the years, we've had lots of hearings about our area. I've walked lots of streets, talked to lots of people, and emailed, and sometimes to me, it just feels like everything falls on deaf ears. So I hope that for real, you will involve community people like us in the Shadowwood Neighborhood and talk to us and include us with input at least, if not some of the planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Siri Lopez?
Hello. I've never been to one of these here, so thank you all for being up here and thank you for working for all of us. I want to also tag on to what everybody else has said. I really love what you said. It was very well thought out. I just came to for the Shadowwood Neighborhood as well. One thing I'd like to add on is, for any of the development that may occur, that it would be thoughtful for the wildlife, also for just the trafficking around there. It's horrible. I will share an experience. I was driving up Stafford just a couple weeks ago, and, you know, just driving speed limit, and there's a car on my tail end, and they weren't paying attention, of course. And I had my blinker on to turn, and they came, I mean, if it was even a tenth of a second faster or slower, they would have hit me and thrown me over the bridge, my car. They had to swerve and swerve and almost head onto another car. So the traffic there is horrendous. It's just very scary. I can't even get out of my drive area there. So if we sit here and develop and bring more on, I think that it has to be thought out very clearly, because it's a very dangerous road as it is. I can't even see it becoming a bigger road because of the way it's built with the river there and with everything going on. The wildlife area, our areas where we live in, with all the development going on, and then we have empty houses, it would be nice if we were just selling some of those houses instead of redeveloping and bringing more people in. We could just fill the houses that are empty instead of cutting down more trees. So I think that we should look at that with our development, that we could use some of the stuff that we already have instead of bringing on new stuff. So again, I want to thank you for everything you said, because I couldn't even say what you're saying, but it was wonderful. So thank you guys for hearing the few things I had to say.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll close the public portion of this hearing, and I wanted to make a couple of comments. One thing is, I'd love to get that information in the IGA, but I'm not starting opening it back up and renegotiating with all these people again. I think what's said in the IGA is basically the cities are going to, are responsible for protecting those wildlife corridors, rivers, and streams in coordination with Metro and the county.
And the community.
And the community. So, I mean, that certainly would be my goal, and from what I've heard of everyone, that's everyone's goal, so I'm sure we'll protect those. And Paul?
Yeah, I just want to add to that. I appreciate Molly capturing a lot of things I wanted to say, so I won't repeat them. You said them well, Molly, so I appreciate that. This is an opportunity, and as Jim kind of alluded to, basically, this really is going to be in the hands of, to a strong degree, as far as participation within the cities. So I would encourage anyone here today or watching to be aware that, get to know the city councilors. We have a couple of them in the back of the room. And as this process unfolds, I think there are a lot of assets there that we need to maintain and strike that balance. And I do know that there's been discussion about a three-party agreement with the cities, where the cities will actually talk about how they're going to, following the signature of this agreement, how they're going to work together to ideally preserve all of this and allow, you know, some things to happen there that is both coordinated and accepted by the cities and the community as well. So this is the pleasant part, the easiest part of the agenda, so I'm excited about approving the IGA.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Land use planning is one of the two most difficult things that any government agency gets involved in, whether it's state, federal, county, city, whatever. The other one, of course, is education. When you're messing with people's land or when you're messing with their children, you can be sure they will be heard. Those are very important things to folks. I want to thank some people for their hard work before we finish this up. So our legal team, Nate Boderman and Mr. Madcor, did a lot of hard work to put this together. In public and government affairs, Ellen Roglan was very helpful in this process. In the planning department, Martha Fritzi, who took a lot of heat at some meetings, being our voice, and I really want to thank her for her effort and her patience. Takes a thick skin sometimes to handle that sort of thing. Mike McAllister also was very instrumental in this process. Mr. Krupp, we oftentimes don't see what the administrative officer does behind the scenes to hold things together when people like me become extremely impatient and want to get it done the day before yesterday. And so it's been a great lesson in patience for me. Not part, excuse me, not part of the county, but important nonetheless was Jeff Goodman, who as a city councilperson saw the potential in this and spoke not only with his own colleagues in Lake Oswego, but with colleagues in other cities, and took a role in advocacy that probably would have been improper for any of us to take. And I really want to thank him for his efforts. And the attorney from their department, excuse me.
He's crying. It's crying. It's tears.
No.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, actually, it's niacin. Anyway, Mr. Condit, I want to thank you, because I know you did yeoman's service in putting the final touches on this. This took a lot of work by a lot of people, a lot of compromise on the part of everyone to get where we are, and some serious good faith negotiations. So I really want to say thank you to all of you for the efforts that you have put in, and I look forward to seeing us go forward and the community of Stafford continue to be the beautiful place that it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, this has been a long time coming, Molly, and what you said was so eloquent. And thank you all for being here today, and thank Jeff and John, staff, Ken said it all. I tell you, when I thought that we started urban rural reserves, what, back in '08 or earlier than that, I think '08, yeah, I didn't realize what a long journey this would be. And I remember at the time talking to folks like Dave Adams and Jay Minor, and I realized that as we moved forward with this, that having an organization like the hamlet was going to be important, because it would give people a focal point on how to organize and how to make sure that they were part of the process, because there are a lot of interests there. We've got interest from the development community, locally from the citizens, county involvement, and obviously, I state the obvious, the three cities surrounding it. So it was very important at the time when we came up with that idea that the hamlet actually became a voice and pulled together to come up with some ideas and a compromise that I truly believe will inform anything that happens in that area with our cities. I think that's very significant, and I'm asking folks, don't lose sight of that. And I think the fact that they were included in the IGA was very important as well, the Stafford community. Obviously, the hamlet is agents of the county, so we'll probably still hear from you guys pretty regularly, which I encourage you to do so. I guess I just wanted to say, as we were going through this, I've been doing a lot of reading on urban and rural land interfaces, and I just want to remind people that there are principles that are already out there for development that will help inform how this particular area looks. And one of the things, I'm going to read this actually, and this is from Sustainable Cities Institute. "The geographical borders among urban, suburban, and rural communities defined important interfaces between inherently different places. Those interfaces are both edges that separate and differentiate among communities and bridges that connect the same communities. Such interfaces are not defined, are defined not only by legal jurisdictional borders, but also by more practical boundaries between neighborhoods and less formally defined communities." So I think this describes this situation perfectly, and as everyone moves forward together collectively, remember that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You already have a framework, and you already have interested people who will manage the development and the bridges and the communities there, I think, with great poise and great intention to really make it a very beautiful spot, a jewel, and a very livable community. So, thank you.
So I want to remind people what happened before the election. Ken and I often have said we got a great gift during the election campaign, and that is the study of employment land that took place in three areas in the county, and Martha Fritzi over there had to stand up in every one of them, and I always felt sorry for her that she had, and she's a professional, so it didn't bother her, but it bothered me. But when we left, Ken and I went to all but one of those meetings, which I didn't know about the first meeting, and the voters said to us, we need to get this resolved. And that's why we're both here today, is that that gift helped move the voters in our direction. But I think it's important to remember that we still, as a county, have responsibilities in Stafford, that if somebody comes and asks for something that fits the zoning, we have to do it. And what's important now, I think, is that it should be concept planned soon and together. If we don't do it together, if you don't do it together, then density is not, you can't just move it around. You have to, it's a balance. It's an average. So you have to do it together, and you should do it soon, because there's nothing stopping a mega church from coming in, 10 of them coming in next week and start planning to build many, many different areas. I think school districts can do that too, but I'm not positive. So it's of great concern. Molly, just when she spoke about the wildlife corridors, you know, those could be greatly impacted by a mega church coming in, or another giant school, or somebody doing something else, a sports facility or something like that. So it needs to be concept planned together and soon. As soon as the traffic study is done, I think we need to move on. Of course, we got to, nothing's going to happen until 205 is done. But I think Jeff Goodman, he was a calming voice, always, I think I texted between him 100 times, you know, he'd say, I'd say, what did they vote on? And he'd say, well, I think they voted the last one, but there must be, I can't imagine how many different proposals there are in an IGA, 20 maybe, out there? But it's great to have this behind us. So I'm ready to vote. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County, Metro, the city of Lake Oswego, the city of Tualatin, and the city of Westland related to the designation of urban reserves in the Stafford area as presented today.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Metro, city of Lake Oswego, the city of Tualatin, the city of Westland related to the designation of urban rural reserves in the Stafford area as presented today. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0.
And you have your unanimity.
I wish Sonia could have been here, but jury duty's kind of hard to get out of. Next, we're on to a reading of an ordinance, numbers 06-2017. Don, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, so this is a reading and adoption of an ordinance to accept the revised findings that affirm the designation of urban and rural reserves in the metro region in response to the remand by the Oregon Court of Appeals and the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission. And we have Mr. Nate Boderman to brief you on this.
Thank you. Now, part two of our hearing this morning, it does involve the ordinance. The ordinance is necessary to accept those revised findings to support the designation of urban and rural reserves in the metro area. These findings are responsive to the remand by the Oregon Court of Appeals and the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission. The State Reserve rules require that Metro and the county adopt a joint set of findings. Metro formally adopted the set of findings substantially similar to what's in front of you today on April 13, 2017. Metro adopted those findings over three, or I'm sorry, Metro's findings were then before you, over three separate hearings in April. On April 26, the board voted 5-0 to direct staff to draft an ordinance adopting those findings and to add a reference to the intergovernmental agreement between the county, metro, and the cities of Tualatin, Lake Oswego, and Westland. The purpose of that reference was to provide evidence that the Stafford area can be served by urban-level public facilities and services efficiently and cost-effectively as is required by state law. The board had a reading of this ordinance on May 11 and allowed additional testimony at that time. Since the IGA wasn't adopted at that prior meeting, the board decided to defer final adoption of the ordinance to today's meeting. But since we now have an adopted IGA, it's appropriate to adopt a set of findings that references that specific intergovernmental agreement. For reference, the language that we added to the intergovernmental agreement can be found on pages 41 and 44 of the findings. This language has This language hasn't changed since the last hearing, so it's being presented just as it was on May 11th. In addition to the adoption of the findings, the ordinance also acknowledges Multnomah County's findings for purposes of complying with the state rule requirements that Metro and all affected counties adopted joint set of findings. Finally, the ordinance authorizes Metro to assemble the adopted findings from Clackamas County and Multnomah County and jointly submit the materials on behalf of Clackamas County. This is also necessary to comply with the state rule requirements, that there be a joint and concurrent submittal of the adopted ordinances implementing the urban and rural reserve designations, and that'll all be sent up to the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission at one time. And for what it's worth, this is the same procedure that was followed several years ago when the original findings were adopted. I understand that Multnomah County is set to have a third reading of their ordinance first week in June, I believe it is. And so at that time, they'll also direct Metro to send the concurrent set of findings up to the Land Conservation and Development Commission. The original plan was to try and get on the July agenda. We'll see if that's possible, but, you know, things move at their own pace. So with that, it's staff's recommendation that you adopt the ordinance as we've provided in your pack and is presented here this morning.
Great. Any questions?
No questions. No questions, I have comments after, but no questions.
Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing portion, ask if Jay Minor would like to speak.
I'd love to, thank you.
Oh, you got to get by the mic, we'll never pick your voice up.
I'll just, I'll just speak with my back to you.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. As you all know, I'm Jay Minor, the Chair of the Stafford Hamlet, and have lived in the Stafford area for over 30 years, and Lake Oswego 12 years before that, and raised four children in the school district. I am here today to call upon you to not affirm the revised findings and to vote against affirming the urban reserve for the Stafford area for 4A, 4B, and 4D, like Dog, and only affirm the area designated as 4C, Charlie, which we refer to as the Borland area. The findings that I've read of Metro's and of the county, and I find them self-serving manner, rationalizing the designation of these areas as urban reserves to meet Metro's numbers game of acreage over a 40, 50-year period. The explanations and conclusions make a mockery of the words "cost-effective" and "efficient." And I, for those that have read it, I think that's the conclusion that you would come to. Truly reading the Metro and county writings, I'm reminded of what government doublespeak is all about. We have previously testified and shown proof that the county commission in 2009 and the Policy Advisory Committee concluded that the area in Stafford, north of the Towalton River, did not meet the factors specified in Senate Bill 1011. The resulting outcome of the 2010 was based on Metro's and developers' desires to have the area urban, not the wishes of the county originally. The Hamlet presented to the previous commission and to this one, our community vision plan that had an 86% approval vote. We refer to the plan as our compromise. The compromise was a grassroots effort that was over eight years in the making. It gave the county employment lands, a buffer between the cities, and an economic gain to the large landowners by reducing the density in the EFU 80-acre to five or 10-acre density for farming. The plan was endorsed by the City of Westland and supported by Lake Oswego and Towalton as a viable alternative. It is a plan required in our bylaws, which was approved by the commission in 2008. The plan was not created in a void, but was a result of meetings with your staff planners over the years, sounding out such land use changes that were part of the plan. These planners were Dan Chandler and Mike McAllister, who we, a number of us had met with over the years. The planners told us that it was doable, but difficult. After all, look at what the county approved for the Hoff property on a Measure 4937 claim. 12 homes on half-acre parcels in EFU-zoned property with six wells. This was the Street of Dreams of 2012, which is off of the, near my home off of Witten Lane. So I want to point out, when we presented our plan to the commission, we were never really given a thoughtful, professional analysis by your staff outlining the problems associated with implementing such a plan and how to succeed with it. Instead, we received anecdotal, misleading, and false statements such as, quote, "A study shows that well water is limited. Therefore, more homes off the grid cannot be added. There is plenty of future water to be supplied by Lake Oswego to meet urban needs. Adding lanes to I-205 will fix the transportation problems, all of your transportation problems in the area." The plan only adds more McMansions, and changing Stafford will require adding reserves, urban reserves, south of the Leilamet River for the Melitas family. All of these statements are simply not true and without basis in fact. Unfortunately, too, a group of a few large landowners consisting of developers and absentee landowners, and some of which are inherited, the property from their families, who have purchased property in the EFU zone, have worked in private, calling their organization SLOA, which is Stafford Landowners Association, continuing to pressure for nothing short of full urbanization. These owners have refused to consider our compromise, and we believe basically based on grounds of expecting a greater economic gain, which we all could refer to as greed or speculation. Too bad. Stafford is not going to go away. The commission created us. Martha was part of that years ago. Thank you, Martha. City mayors, councilors, and commissioners will come and go, but residents and families living in the Stafford area and the three surrounding cities will still be here. Most of us are here for the long haul, although personally, I'm at the end of the long haul and will most likely be downsizing since all of my children are grown and gone, but I still hang on to that beautiful piece of property in the Stafford area. Maybe a future commission will listen to the people and take the road less traveled, make a tough leadership decision, and not just roll over to the political expediency called for by Metro. I do want, though, to leave on a positive note and commend the commission for their actions working with the cities regarding the intergovernmental agreement, but not your actions playing Metro's acreage game. The IGA now more clearly spells out the planning role of the three cities in the future, and hopefully will end in a positive note for everyone. Thank you, and good luck to the commissioners. There are those of us that will remain persistent and consistent, as a previous commission chair called us, and we will continue to present our future as we see it for the Stafford area. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Now I'll close the public portion of this hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to read the ordinance by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries, ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance for the purpose of responding to the remand from the Oregon Court of Appeals in the Land Conservation and Development Commission regarding the designation of urban and rural reserves in the metro region.
Okay, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ordinance number 062017 related to the designation of urban and rural reserves in the metro region in response to the remand by the Oregon Court of Appeals and the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission as presented today.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I figured this is what you were waiting for, Ken was up first. Oh, Ken, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would simply, with respect to Mr. Minor's comments, say that this is the best possible way forward, given the universe, if you will, of possibilities. I hope that the community will remain consistent and persistent with respect to the planning that will go forward with the cities. Make sure that your voices are heard and that as much as possible can be preserved in the Stafford area. I agree with you that it is a beautiful area. I agree with the comments I heard earlier about the preservation of the wildlife corridor, and I think there's some opportunities in that to do that. But that said, this commission has a responsibility to the county as a whole and not just to any one single area. And to remain in, for lack of a better term, purgatory for another seven years of legal wrangling is not responsible to the county as a whole. There are other communities who have issues that have been able to be addressed while this is pending, and it is time for us to move forward. And it's my personal opinion that this is the best way forward that we have available to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Savis.
Yes, well, I know that Chair Bernard talked about why himself and Commissioner Humberson are here today, and I thought, I've been doing a lot of reflecting, and I could go back and talk about some of the articles I read in the 80s that were printed in the 80s and articles that were printed in the 90s and the early 2000s. But I really thought I would focus my comments today on the last 10 years because it actually is very interesting what was going on 10 years ago today. And so before I get into those specific comments, I just want to say that, you know, the reason I'm here today is because in 2007, it was my last year on MPAC, the commission changed. The commission's emphasis back then, when we had three commissioners, not five, they were putting a lot of effort, a lot of money and investment in the Sunrise Corridor. They were focused on going east in the Sunrise Corridor. And we had our urban renewal, we had our Clackamas industrial area, we were acquiring property for the right of way. It was zoned for industrial. That was the future of the Clackamas County, very detailed plan. I've been an advocate of that. I was proud of my county commission at the time and proud of the work the county was doing in that regard. It was very supportive. It was right around 2007, even though my involvement in public goes back in 20 years, I've been only to speak to the last 10. So when I discovered things were changing, and maybe changing in a way that I didn't like, I got more involved. So I'm going to read this into the record and also ask that it be part of the record. And it doesn't contain everything, so I just ask for the indulgence of my colleagues. I'll be, I'll just read this and I'll close with this. So Senate Bill 1011 passed in the legislature and was signed by the governor in 2007. The purpose of the bill was to create a 50-year supply of land reserves for both agriculture and urban development, primarily to foster and create livable communities. Metro and the counties of Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas embarked on analysis, and public meetings determined these reserves. 2007 was also the year we fell into recession. 2007 was also the year, the last year of three, in which I participated in MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee meetings. It was during this time I first became aware of the greater metro region slipping deeper into poverty. It was a presentation that was made to both Metro Council and the members of MPAC, and there were discussions about the need for affordable housing and more high-paying jobs to offset the growing trend into poverty. The presentation included statistics indicating a trend that showed a growing disparity between the average family wage income and the cost of housing. It was a sobering report at a time when our economy was on the verge of recession, followed by the legislature passing Senate Bill 1011, a charge to the region, Senate Bill 1011 being a charge of the region, to find land reserves for both employment and housing, as well as agricultural reserves. The timing could not have been better for a regional dialogue on behalf of the residents of this region, but with Metro leading the way, the region proceeded with business as usual. Today, it appears Washington County managed their reserves reasonably well. Though not to the satisfaction of all, they have grown their employment base remarkably well. Most of all their urban reserves are located in areas adjacent to cities and infrastructure to create more than adequate certainty, capitalized certainty, to promote employment growth. In 2009, Clackamas County adopted an urban rural reserves map with most of its employment land reserves, specifically industrial, miles and miles away from existing infrastructure or any city with existing infrastructure. The designations of reserves in Clackamas County seem to ignore the findings of an industrial Excuse me, one page off here. Industrial land study which showed Clackamas having negligible industrial lands of 25 acres or more. Since the recession, since rural reserves designation, since the economic recovery, since the deliberate efforts of our Economic Development Commission to assist farm owners and operators in our agricultural areas, we have only seen a modest uptick in food production. In 2014, the Clackamas County Commission unanimously approved our strategic goals and soon after unanimously adopted the urban, at the Economic Development Commission's recommendation, to reexamine the urban and rural reserves. While we only seemed to start the process, it became a political theater mired in misrepresentations by special interest and candidates focused on their campaigns. Yet today, we are approving the same map, the same designations, without changes, without any serious analysis of available infrastructure or serious consideration of our own employment land study, which showed a shortage of industrial land. In November of 2015, I testified to Metro at their urban rural reserve hearings. I informed them of my concerns and reminded them that it was the Metro Council who promoted Senate Bill 1011, which was enacted in 2007 for the purposes of designating urban rural reserves to preserve farmland and assure livable communities. We now find ourselves 10 years later, with millions of dollars of taxpayer monies wasted in court battles, we have record numbers of men, women, and children homeless, a transportation system that is woefully inadequate and undersized, a shortage of low-income housing, and a shortage of jobs that actually support a family. This Metro staff report that is part of this adoption today repeatedly cites the 2015 Urban Growth Report as a justification for the urban growth boundary and the proposed reduction of 2,000 acres of urban reserves, the same urban growth report that most every city in the region said was flawed. The Best Achieved Standard states the goal of livable communities. Look around. What is our community becoming? Several years ago, when I drove to MPAC meetings at Metro and JPAC meetings, I would count how many pedestrians and bicyclists were using our sidewalks and bike lanes. Now, I count the homeless sites and the tarps. A few months ago, I participated in the homeless count. I heard similar real-life stories that I also heard in 2015 homeless count. Newly homeless citizens who lost their full-time jobs, mothers and fathers, some with kids in tow, some simply became homeless because they could no longer afford their rent, but now have lower-paying jobs, and I refer to them as working families that are homeless. Our sidewalks are now, our trails and our bridges are now home to the homeless because of the shortage of jobs that can support families. Their former employers were either zoned out of existence or priced out. So under Best Achieves, how do we justify this as a roadmap to livable communities? Qualitatively? The Best Achieves would, should quantitatively apply to the industrial land shortage citing the job shortage. So here we are today. Metro and the county have only seriously engaged the cities surrounding Stafford. The county commission has only met and spoken to the Stafford community, and today we have a five-party agreement that is designed to end years of turmoil. To that, I am pleased and supportive. As I testified to the Metro Council at their urban reserves hearings, I read aloud the following to them. "As a former member of MPAC 10 years ago, I learned the challenges we face. I know the Metro Council saw the same material I saw. In particular, the disparity between the average family wage income and the cost of housing was growing, a glide path into poverty and homelessness. That one red flag alone..." path into poverty and homelessness. That one red flag alone should have driven this region, this metro government, to make an adjustment to correct that trend, but instead, it has worsened. No cause evictions are forcing families out of their homes, and we now have families scrambling to find housing they can afford. The middle class is evaporating while crime and homelessness are rising sharply. Those were my comments. So ten long years have passed us by, and our latest homeless count saw yet another sharp increase. Today is just an end to a chapter, and tomorrow marks the beginning of another chapter. We must focus on the failing smart growth policies that are driving people into poverty. We are failing our citizens, most of which we do not, who do not want a handout. They just want jobs that can support families and to live in a productive life. We owe it to them and the younger generations that are graduating in the coming weeks and the coming years. Thank you for your indulgence.
All right, uh I guess I can add a cou- a couple of comments. Um you know, Clackamas, the court said Clackamas County did it right. We did address the findings. Washington County, on the other hand, did not. So the legislature had to step in and and draw the line for them. Uh Clackamas County today as will complete the process. Uh and you know, not only did we talk to the Stafford community, we also talked to the surrounding cities. At one point, uh there was an effort to uh create uh employment lands in areas that we didn't even communicate with the cities that we were considering it. Uh south of the Willamette, of course, they knew that that was on there. Camby, the mayor of Camby, didn't even know we were looking at that land. And uh Carver, the Carver piece, uh Estacada or whoever was in charge of that was uh just, you know, no one was even considered. Ken and I went to those meetings. I think only one meeting, south of the Willamette, did one person show up who supported, and guess who that was? The Molidus Brothers. So uh what I'm excited about is putting this behind us and letting the giving um Wilsonville the opportunity to look at the lands that they've been working hard on bringing in, which it does include employment land and housing. Uh second, I, like Paul, would like to focus again on the sunrise phase sunrise phase two. Um we have a lot of transportation problems. Two oh five isn't gonna solve it. And uh but the sunrise would open up a lot of new employment land. So I'm committed to looking there next uh and see where we can get the dollars to open up some of those lands. Um I think that um, you know, we have listened to the Stafford folks. There have been a lot of different compromises provided. Even the Land Owners Association had a compromise. Websites that exaggerated things uh didn't help any either. But you know, I I think that we have a good solution today, and the cities will be working with the Stafford as as well as us to make sure that their concerns are addressed. And Borland has a great potential. Um and I again hope that the cities get together and they concept plan that pro- that area soon before something happens that they don't want. And uh and we need to do that soon. And the averaging of uh densities key to preserving uh Stafford somewhat to what it is today. And you know, we could have not voted on the I G A today, I mean, on the uh findings today and uh ended up in court. And I had uh the legislator tell me, well, if you don't, we will make you, we will make it happen. And this is the better way to solve this problem. So um, see, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye? I'm standing?
No.
Oh, I couldn't hear you. It's my bad ear. Sometimes I think we ought to do the poll, but it's it's unanimous, four zero. The reserves are resolved. Thank you very much. I I think we're planning on a signing ceremony when we can all get together and sign the agreement. Uh we'll get some giant blow-up things we can each sign and then uh give everybody a...
Careful there, Jim.
Yeah, sorry, blow-up things. All right, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.